All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session. It's Wednesday, July 24, 2024. Are we live viewed at this particular moment? Yes. Yeah, we just need to make sure Rick's on his way down. Okay, so we are picking up with, we will be picking up with our capital improvement program review, but prior to that, we have an executive session. Public virtual attendance is available on Thursday County YouTube channel, We are out of the executive session, which constituted item agenda, or agenda item one. but we will obviously have a 30 projected 30 minute executive session before public access will be restored due to livestream. Board has given direction to staff. There's no formal legislative action by the board. So we're moving on to item two, which will be livestreamed, The session is from 2:00 to 4:30 in total. My name is Time Enter Chair of the Board. and is a continuation of the morning's review of capital improvement program. We have Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier, Commissioner Mahia, Commissioner Klaus, and Commissioner Edwards participating virtually. And we're up to the capital facilities, kind of internal governmental pieces of our capital facilities. Our county manager, Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers, Robin Campbell and Rob Gelder. And there's Rick Thomas. So the first item up is executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101B We have, I don't know who's leading the discussion.
Yeah, it'll be Rick.
to consider selection of a site or acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase
We can pass over to him.
Central Services. And so, Rick, good afternoon. when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Why don't you just kick it off for us?
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. I'm Rick Thomas.
Purchase of a building is the general topic.
I'm the Capital Projects Planning Manager with Central Services.
30 minutes is projected.
And this afternoon, we're going to walk through our capital improvement program for 2025 through 2030,
Is that accurate? Sometimes that's.
Well, we might only need 15 minutes.
So start with 15?
with the focus really being on the next couple of years.
Yes. Start with 15 minutes. Okay, and then we'll extend if necessary.
So.
Commissioners' action may follow.
Next slide here.
So it's 2:03 will be an executive session until at least 2:18.
Just a reminder, our capital facilities projects are designed to provide safe and sustainable public facilities to serve the public as well as our staff. And our projects are primarily selected upon safety needs, health, accessibility within the buildings, sustainability, operational efficiency, and effectiveness of our facilities. So as we kind of walk through these, you'll see how those goals are met. I want to take just one slide and go back in time and talk about 2023 for just a moment. There were four projects that were completed in 2023. We had the fairgrounds building improvements, which basically did some demolition work and some site work and preparation for additional projects that might be done if we could get grants in the future out of the fairgrounds. We also had a project that repaired the heating roof at the Family Juvenile Center Court. We completed the public health building water lab. So they now have their new water lab up and running. And we also replaced the air conditioning unit and the IT room at the Thurston County Correctional Facility. So those, those were the four main projects that were completed in 2023. Now, as we move forward, first project that I want to just kind of highlight, and I just have a couple of slides to give you an idea of projects that are in construction and kind of finishing up. The first one here is our voter registration center. This one's been a few years in the works, but as I think you all know, we actually have an open house on Friday, and so we're finishing up the last part of that construction right now. This is the project to get the new voters registration center into a permanent location. This is out at the Mottman Center, right across the parking lot from where the existing ballot processing center is at. This was a project that used a variety of different funding sources in order to complete it. And we, like I said, we basically are just wrapping it up now.
Can I add something to this? I, Rick, I'm wondering if you can go just for, because I know there is an open house on Friday for this, you know, which is very exciting. But at the time when we were considering this project, we had to scrape from every single one. Rick is saying there's a variety of funds in there. There really is. We were taking little pieces from every little pot that we could possibly get in order to make this project possible. So it really did take a lot of effort from staff and from the board to come up to that number.
I might also just let everybody know that we've really have had a great team working on this from the auditor's office to our facilities group and our contractor. And we're actually, we're actually anticipating coming under budget on this one by 100 or maybe $200,000 by the time we're done. So it just good teamwork on this one.
So where is those additional, like, I mean?
Where's that money going back?
Moving, Rick, keep moving.
Considering the sources, it will probably be the building reserves.
That's what I was wondering.
Good. Right. Not ARPA?
No, no, we'll use all the ARPA. We did actually put no ARPA money into this. It was the lost revenue. And there was another piece. There was the lost revenue from ARPA, but there was the building reserves from building one. There was the interest off the ARPA fund, which we could use in any government way. And there was the rent that we have from the tenants that hadn't moved out of Mottman yet.
There was a change from my.
I was gonna say, change in the couch cushions from.
Exactly. We were, we were looking under the cushions to figure out a way to fund this. So I really appreciate the support of the board. And the other piece of this that paid for a lot of the security in the building were grants that our auditor, Mary Hall, obtained from the state that also made this a successful project. So it really was a team effort.
Yeah, I believe she got between 300,000 and 500,000 dollars in grants for security measures as well.
Yep. So. Yep, everybody, everybody played.
The next project, again, this isn't all of them that we've been working on this summer, but we did complete, and this is a pretty small project, but we replaced the 30-year-old well pump and pressure system out at the Tilly Campus. I kind of wanted to highlight that one because there is no city utilities out there. And if the well goes down, they're held commission. And they are really kind of a first response group out there. So we were able to get that one completed this year as well. So I'm going to run through some of the, some of the more significant upcoming projects for '25 and '26. The first one is our countywide solar energy system installation. This isn't necessarily one project, but this is a program that we're working on with Rebecca Harvey. She is working to get some grants so that we could do some projects. As of right now, we have the hope that we're going to be able to do at least one solar project. I think that it might be out at the public health building, but we're still working through some details on that. But this allows us to be able to do these projects when we have funding come available. Commissioner, did you have a question?
You're talking about solar. Are we off? Okay.
I am off.
And you're saying we're thinking about the public health building? This isn't just about the WARC project, the PSC. Okay.
This is, this is a broader context, yes. Next project, this is our countywide security improvements program. And just as a reminder, we have, we're right in the middle of construction for Phase One, which is Buildings Five, the Coroner's Office, and the Emergency Service Center. They'll be finishing that up before the end of the year. Phase Two would be for presently for Building Six, the fairgrounds, the Family Justice Court, I'm sorry, Family Juvenile Court, the Public Health Service Building, and the Tilly Campus. So that was a part of the larger project a few years ago that got scaled back. It's estimated that this project would be about $1.3 million. All of the different groups in these buildings have indicated that this is a really important project for them. The up now is our countywide vehicle charging station, electrical charging station. Again, this is going to be based upon grant funding that Rebecca Harvey has been working on, and they're kind of supporting her with the potential projects. As of right now, the two projects that Central Services will likely be managing are, say, one is going to be the fleet charging station that will be in the Patterson parking lot across from the atrium here. And then the Public Works is also going to be doing a project using this funding out at the board. They have four stations they're going to put in there. So again, we're waiting for final confirmation of the grant before we actually go forward with this project.
Can I go back to solar again?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you were like saying, well, we're looking at different buildings, and public health might be one. But where is the estimated, like, 1.7 million? And that's kind of specific. Like, what is that covering? Where are you coming up with that number?
There was, there's a study that, there's a consultant that we've been working with called Cascadia that has gone through a list of about five or six different buildings. And they've come back with proposals to the county in regards to the feasibility, the installation cost, the lifecycle cost, and those sorts of things. And so the $1.7 million is an estimate that Rebecca has put together based upon kind of a priority of projects. And I apologize that I don't know that list of projects.
Manager with Central Services. And this afternoon, we're going to walk through our capital improvement program for twenty five through twenty thirty with the focus really being on the next couple of years. So. Just a reminder, our capital facilities projects are designed to provide safe and sustainable public facilities to serve the public as well as our staff. And our projects are primarily selected upon safety needs, health, accessibility within the buildings, sustainability, operational efficiency, and effectiveness of our facilities. So as we kind of walk through these, you'll see how those goals are met. Want to take just one slide and go back in time and talk about twenty twenty-three for just a moment. There were four projects that were completed in twenty twenty-three. We had the fairgrounds building improvements, which basically did some demolition work and some site work and preparation for additional projects that might be done if we could get grants in the future out of the fairgrounds. We also had a project that repaired the heating roof at the family juvenile center court. We completed the public health building water lab, so they now have their new water lab up and running. And we also replaced the air conditioning unit and the IT room at the Thurston County Correctional Facility. So those, those were the four main projects that were completed in twenty twenty-three. Now, as we move forward. First project that I want to just kind of highlight, and I, I just have a couple of slides to give you an idea of projects that are in construction and kind of finishing up. The first one here is our voter registration center. Been a few years in the works, but as I think you all know, we actually have an open house on Friday, and so we're finishing up the last part of that construction right now. This is the project to get the new voters registration center into a permanent location. This is out at the Mottman Center, right across the parking lot from where the existing ballot processing center is at. This was a project that used a variety of different funding sources in order to complete it, and we, like I said, we basically are just wrapping it up now.
Can I add something to this? I, Rick, I'm, I'm wondering if you can go just for. Because I know there is an open house on Friday for this, you know, which is very exciting. But at the time when we were considering this project, we had to scrape from every single one. Rick is saying there's a variety of funds in there. There really is. We were taking little pieces from every little pot that we could possibly get in order to make this project possible. So it, it really did take a lot of effort from staff and from the board to come up to that number.
I might also just let everybody know that we've really have had a great team working on this from the auditor's office to our facilities group and our contractor. And we're actually, we're actually anticipating coming under budget on this one by hundred or maybe two hundred thousand dollars by the time we're done. So it just good teamwork on this one.
So where is those additional, like, I mean?
Where's that money going back?
Moving, Rick, keep moving.
Considering the sources, it will probably be the building reserves.
That's what I was wondering.
Good. Right. Not ARPA?
No, no, we'll use all the ARPA. We did actually put no ARPA money into this. It was the lost revenue. And there was another piece, there was the lost revenue from ARPA, but there was the building reserves from building one. There was the interest off the ARPA fund, which we could use in any government way. And there was the rent that we have from the tenants that hadn't moved out of Mottman yet.
There was a change from my.
Change in the couch cushions from courthouse.
We were, we were looking under the cushions to figure out a way to fund this. So I really appreciate the support of the board. And the other piece of this that paid for a lot of the security in the building were grants that our auditor, Mary Hall, obtained from the state that also made this a successful project. So it really was a team effort.
Yeah, I believe she got between three hundred of five hundred thousand dollars in grants for security measures as well, so.
Yep, everybody, everybody played.
The next project, again, this isn't all of them that we've been working on this summer, but we did complete, and this is a pretty small project, but we replaced the thirty year, thirty year old well pump and pressure system out at the Tilly Campus. I kind of wanted to highlight that one because there is no city utilities out there, and if the well goes down, they're held commission, and they are really kind of a first, you know, response group out there. So we were able to get that one completed this year as well. So I'm going to run through some of the, some of the more significant upcoming projects for twenty-five and twenty-six. The first one is our countywide solar energy system installation. This isn't necessarily one project, but this is a program that we're working on with Rebecca Harvey. She is working to get some grants so that we could do some projects. As of right now, we have the hope that we're going to be able to do at least one solar project. Think that it might be out at the public health building, but we're still working through some details on that. But this allows us to be able to do these projects when we have funding come available. Commissioner, did you have a question?
You're talking about solar. Are we off? Okay.
I am off.
And you're saying we're thinking about the public health building? This isn't just about the WARC project, the PSC. Okay.
This is, this is a broader context, yes. Next project, this is our countywide security improvements program. And just as a reminder, we have, we're right in the middle of construction for phase one, which is buildings five, coroner's office, and the emergency service center. They'll be finishing that up before the end of the year. Phase two would be for presently for building six, the fairgrounds, the family justice court, I'm sorry, family juvenile court, the public health service building, and the Tilly Campus. So that was a part of the larger project a few years ago that got scaled back. It's estimated that this project would be about one point three million dollars. All of the different groups in these buildings have indicated that this is a really important project for them. The, up now is our countywide vehicle charging station, electrical charging station. Again, this is going to be based upon grant funding that Rebecca Harvey has been working on, and they're kind of supporting her with the potential projects. As of right now, the two projects that Central Services will likely be managing are, say, one is going to be the fleet charging station that will be in the Patterson parking lot across from the atrium here. And then the, then Public Works is also going to be doing a project using this funding out at the court. They have four stations they're going to put in there. So again, we're waiting for final confirmation of the grant before we actually go forward with this project.
Can I go back to solar again?
Yeah, absolutely.
So. You, you were like saying, well, we're looking at different buildings, and public health might be one, but where is the estimated, like, one point seven million, that's kind of specific, like, what is that covering? Where are you coming up with that number?
There was, there's a study that, there's a consultant that we've been working with called Cascadia that has gone through a list of about five or six different buildings, and they've come back with proposals to the county in regards to the feasibility, the installation cost, the lifecycle cost, and those sorts of things. And so the one point seven million dollars is an estimate that Rebecca has put together based upon kind of a priority of projects. And I, I apologize that I don't know that list of projects really specifically.
That's fine, but the one point seven is like if all the ones that seemed feasible could be done, is that a, is that a?
I, I believe that this one is actually just looking at the public health service one, because if my recollection serves me right, some of the other ones are up into the three to five million dollar category.
Okay, and I'm, I'm wondering, you know, I know Commissioner Mahia and maybe Edward, I don't know, a couple of us were approached by the folks that worked on that bill that changed financing so that you could sort of, almost like a rent to own type of a thing with these types of projects for local governments. And I know we were like, does this apply to the courthouse somehow? And, you know, that's got its own timeline and challenges.
Right.
But is there any way that that would apply? I mean, now that we're on the, now that we're just looking at other buildings and there's no timeline and we could sort of set it up, I mean, that whole bill was designed to make it easy for us to do these things without upfront expenditure.
Right.
Is there a way that that fits? Is that being evaluated?
I can certainly ask Rebecca. I, I know she's not leaving any rock unturned, so it would not surprise me.
Like, you don't own the solar panels until they're like paid off, essentially, and then, but then the energy savings is offsetting the payments and. It, it basically allows you to, which local government didn't used to be able to do, but now we can. It makes it easy to invest in these things. It was supposed to make it easy to invest in these types of energy upgrades. So I'd like to see if that's workable for something. If we've identified public health, well, there's where we start.
Right.
But, you know, one point seven is a, is quite a bit of money.
It is quite a bit of money. Solar installations are, they're still pretty expensive. So, yes.
The vehicle charging station. I'm just trying to understand the, the logic, and this is our temporary home. Why would we make investments in a parking lot that we're not going to be using five years from now?
I, the, what I would say on that is, we know that it is our home for the next five years, and that's where our fleet is right now. My understanding on the grant is, is that it, there, there's a requirement for like four or five years of, of use and testing and reporting. And then after that, it, it's none of that is required. So, and I'd, I'd have to go back and ask Rebecca for sure on that one, but my understanding is, is that the, the grant was available, and this was a need that, that fleet wanted because they were going to try to electrify the fleet more.
Yeah, I, I, I can understand on other parking lots, but like, you know, that one, if five years from now, we're not going to be in this building, and we're just going to sell that parking lot, are we better off positioned to sell that without that there? You know, or is that a valuable asset to somebody to sell? Or would we just have some random island of cars far away from county facilities?
We don't own the lot.
We don't own the lot?
Rented.
But we're going to put the.
We are going to put, because that's where our fleet is.
Okay. Then it wouldn't be our problem. Fair. Thank you.
The next project is our Thurston County Courthouse Infrastructure Upgrades Project. This is our fifty million dollar project, and we've had lots of conversations about that. So I, I'm not really sure how much more detail we want to go into it, but this one again is put in place to try to expand the, the life function with our tenants as much as we can and provide as much functional safe space for our, for our staff as possible, understanding that this is really just an interim solution until we can have a long, very long range plan put into place.
Anyone who's interested can check into our subcommittee.
Exactly.
Let's move on.
And the project that's here, if we pivot to something else, this project being on the plan covers that, so.
Next project on the slide is our courthouse roof replacement program, and this gives us the ability to repair or replace any damaged roofs or worn out roofs on buildings one through seven. We have an estimated cost of five million dollars. However, that again is spread out over this five year time period or six year time period of our CIP. And these will be addressed as we have sufficient funds within our building reserve pool and have verified that in fact the roofs need to have some major work done on them or be replaced.
And then the buildings that we give love to may change based on how we consolidate.
Yes.
Building seven may never see a roof.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I would be negligent not to bring this up, but we do have a, we're in the bidding process right now to replace the roof on building three. And we're anticipating the bids on, actually tomorrow, I believe. Our estimate was about five hundred thousand dollars from that, so just want to make you aware of that, because I know we have that bigger conversation going on with buildings, you know, one through seven. Our next project is at the Mottman one building for the ballot processing center. Again, this is to renovate the existing ballot processing center to make it more secure and more efficient. This will also get all of the election activities into one consolidated space, so Mottman will be that specific area. The benefit for this is to be able to increase the voter involvement in our elections and to provide a secure space for them to be able to monitor and at the same time to have an efficient operational area for our election staff. The estimated cost of this is ten million dollars and the funding sources from the recent safety tax. This one, we're actually in the midst right now of finalizing the design. We're hoping to have the design done within about a month and then possibly go out to get bids by the end of the year, so. The Tilly Campus Sky Bridge Repairs is actually being done in two phases right now. We're finishing up the design and getting ready to bid the repair and repainting of the sky bridge that goes between building C and building B. We found out that we have some structural deficiencies in the bridge that goes between building C and building A, and so we are doing some additional evaluation in that project. We're going to have to put off until next year, and that's why we're adding a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the budget for that particular project that we'll do next year. We have, the next project is our family and juvenile court improvements. It shows a cost of two million dollars on this. What our plan would be, would primarily be next year to look into doing pre-designed work and design work to determine how their space could or should be reconfigured to be more efficient based upon their operational needs. Again, this facility really hasn't had any major changes to it from an operational perspective since it was built about twenty plus years ago, and most of the groups in there have a desire for us to kind of relook at how they do business and see if we can be more efficient with their work. So this project will be looking at their existing program, space requirements, and then determining what might be the best approach to reconfigure the space that's there.
I have a question about that one. Does the two million cover, it sounds like it just covers like pre-design and design? Is, or does it also cover?
It does. The, the two million dollars, as of right now, the two million dollars would, would also cover the construction.
Okay.
I will say, since we don't have a pre-designed done on this, that's really probably more of a placeholder than anything. We'll certainly have a better number once we go through the pre-designed study and can get the input directly from the folks that are over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Needed expansion for what specifically?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't.
Needed expansion for what specifically?
We're, we're hearing that, that the courts have some additional needs for expansion. Again, I, I don't know all the details that are involved with the scenario there. Again, that's why we're going to, we're going to kind of dive into that pre-designed study and find out what they're thinking behind the scenes.
Okay. They've, they've talked about another courthouse needed.
Courtroom.
Courtroom, thank you, courtroom. We've all talked about another courthouse. Another courtroom. The clerk has talked to us about additional space needs there. There are changes in how the prosecutor will use their space there and. So other expansion. So they've been talking to Central Services about these needs for at least five years. And there had at one point, just prior to me taking over Central Services, there was a project that was kind of in process that we put a stop to, but we need to do the assessment of what is actually needed there, and that's what this is.
Okay.
Oh, I have plenty of thoughts, but I'll save them for the subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
Rick, if you can go back, just that one, this is more of a process question. How does it work when a office or department says they have space needs? What's the interaction look like? Do they just bring you their space needs? Do you evaluate what they're saying they need?
Yeah, so as it stands right now, whoever was in my position or me being in my position, we typically reach out to all of the different department heads, usually at the end of a calendar year, and then the very first part of the calendar year, we're doing the CIP to ask them for any suggested projects that they would have, any space needs that they think that they might have coming up for a CIP period. So that's been our primary methodology to determine kind of what the needs are. I don't want to digress too far here, but we do have on our initiative within Central Services to get a consultant on board to help us to go to all of the different department heads and do a space requirements analysis for all the different departments. So we have the data collectively for the entire county at one time in space, if you will, so that we can start putting together a long plane, a long range plan for space needs, whether it would be five years in the future, ten years in the future, or, you know, twenty years in the future. So hopefully our process will get better. Yes.
Can I ask a follow up to that, right? Because that's space, but how about the infrastructure needs, right? Like, there's, who is checking up on those in each of these buildings that we own to make sure that, oh, we need to start planning for a roof repair or an HVAC repair or whatever repairs that department directors are not paying attention to, which are.
Right. So, so Jason Ash is, is the lead on that. They have a software package called Asset Essentials. That's a brightly company. We and Central Services and my group have just, we're just getting trained on a different module that's called Capital Predictor. That's the module that will allow us to take input from Jason's group in regards to systems and when they're going to be wearing out and helping us put it into this larger Capital Predictor program to determine when major systems need to have work on it, how much work they need to do, and where they need to be in the time scale of time. And so Jason and I are going to be working real closely on that as we go forward. And again, we're, we're just getting trained up in the system, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be able to come back to you and really show you what this program can do.
More information as we move through the budget process on, on exactly that.
Next project is the coroner's office interior upgrades, and this project is basically going to be to replace one flooring that is in the coroner's office right now. For the budget that we have, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it won't replace all of the flooring that's in there, but we're going to be finishing a design by the end of the year that tells us which, which is the worst of the flooring, and that's what we're going to be taking care of. One of the reasons we won't be able to do all of it is that once we spend this hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we'll pretty much have maxed out the building reserve for the coroner's office. So the design will be done this year, and then the construction replacement of the flooring will be next year. The, the next item here is the coroner's office reconfiguration remodel. And Commissioner, this goes back to your question about how do we get information? This is one of them that the coroner's office directly came to us and said, we're a growing county, we're actually, we're actually running out of space to do what we really need to do. So what they've asked us to do is to take a look at any possible ways that we can reconfigure their existing building space in order to give them more space to do their work, knowing that this isn't a twenty year plan, but this gets them through, you know, five to ten years. I can pretty much guarantee you that when we go through their space plan in regards to what they need in ten to twenty years, they're going to need an, an annex onto the building they have now or a new facility as well. The good news is there was actually planning that was done on that site that they have the coroner's building right now. There's, you probably have seen it, but the lawn that's out in front of it has actually already been set up to be able to be built upon. It has utilities and everything else that are already there for us to do something in the future if we need to do that, if we choose to stay there. So this is one where we would likely do the pre-design and the design next year. And then, again, this is one that we have to figure out the funding on because we don't typically use building reserves funding to do tenant improvement type of work. And so.
What's that? Do we own that building?
We do own that building, yes. So we'll need to work with the coroner's office on some funding sources. I know they're already keeping their eyes open for grants, but we haven't found much that fits that particular gap. The new sheriff's office renovation. Again, this is in the CIP, assuming that we're going to have a new sheriff's office someplace within Thurston County. And we also realize that whatever the building is that we might get, we'll likely have to have some sort of improvements done to it. And so this is that project for us to do the interior improvements. And so we're estimating right now about three million dollars. But as we've talked a little bit earlier, it, it could go up and down based upon final information that we get. And then the, the last item that we have is our major maintenance. And this is, this is primarily a category that allows us to make repairs on our facilities that are really, that just happen, and they're an emerging issue that needs to be dealt with as quickly as possible. And so what we're asking for is, and the budget this year is eight hundred thousand dollars to take care of issues that might come up from that. And this is, this is different from the day to day operation and maintenance that the facilities group would go through. This would actually be some of those larger type projects that our capital group may have to actually help support the facilities group with. So that's our project. Questions?
Question about the solar, sorry. When you mentioned that funding, is the majority of that coming from grants that Rebecca brought to mind? Is the placement of that solar locked in as part of the grant, or is that flexible?
The one that I'm aware of right now, we do have to lock it in, although they haven't made us lock it in until kind of the last minute. We've been able to submit based upon kind of a portfolio of what we might do, and then if we make the shortlist, they basically. if we make the shortlist, they basically have asked us then, okay, tell us which one you're going to do.
Do you know the life cycle of those? Maybe this is questions that you and I can have. Cycles of those charging stations?
From what I've been hearing, they're typically 20 to 25 years.
Okay, yeah, so maybe you and I and Robin can talk about that. I understand where the commissioners are, are, their perspective about, we're only going to be here five years, we make an investment here, we actually improve the property for the owner. And so if we're going to be building a fleet, I'd hate to have to find dollars to build new stations in five years' time for a different location, so.
Right.
I'm curious to, if we could, we can chat offline.
Yeah.
And we're not getting a great deal on this building.
No.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Good job.
At the end, that's the end of the slide. Does that cover our?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, Andrew, that's it, okay? Very good. And that wraps up item two and we're up to commissioner's items. Anything we need to cover? This was a lot. Yep, always is and. Don't have any board stuff tomorrow, so, so see everybody back Monday morning. We're adjourned.